Oh, okay, those are.
Good call to order. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So I'm moved.
Any free discussions? Yeah, all of them, baby, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Betty's next door making some copies. Claims have been around.
I've been. Have minutes from the. Did you guys?
No, I didn't have me either.
Whoa, I don't know.
They don't. Same with that, there's.
Yeah.
And you said, can he run thirty bucks?
Right end. But they were most three or two sided, you know, and make copies on. When do you want to find the notes? So we're in recess right now.
It's Monday. Long week last week, yeah. We did. Right, we gave a whole lot of hours last week. How many?
And they are where?
Does she not have them?
It's crazy, we sit with them and study. We just get down to open forum, anybody in the audience or on Zoom was to address the board? Okay. Wait for number six for Betty. And we want to give us your reports?
Uh, to report, yes.
Wait. Sorry, somebody here take, uh, or they doing it off of the recording?
The report is, I guess, the other report, I will do the two other things that you need to take action on.
Okay.
Yeah, so. It's she can, it's essentially the same thing almost every week, so, uh, the blade operators played at six hundred and forty-four miles. Um, opened some roads up that were still underwater, uh, early last week, um, and got them touched up. Um, called the trucks, called your hand there and spot, spot loads, we're at seventy-seven point. Eight percent, um, seventy out of ninety segments on the scheduled rock for twenty twenty-four, thirty, uh. Um, work orders were completed, a lot of those work orders were brush that we closed out and then also material in the ditch, we had some, um. Card socks that we had to go out, out and get.
So burn those or?
I think they just haul them away and put them at our, one of the sites to burn, yeah, they're kind of wet. So it takes a little, we can't really burn them in place because it's soaked.
Yeah.
So we've tried that in the past. Um, and then this week, uh, we'll be pulling some, pulling the blades, uh, starting to get hard on us, uh, so. Obviously, they're going to still spot blade when they need to and blade new rock, uh, they're going to whip, weed whip bridges, box culverts and do some level B work. So that's what I have for that. Oh, sorry, yes, this C seventy bridge?
It's okay. No, what we, what we mean. Uh, mowing. Other than, uh, hard surface throughout, so we wait.
We wait until fall through that because it grows too fast. Um, the guys might go out with the, um. The disc mowers and do some spots if they, if they feel like they're getting too, uh, encroached on the, when they blade because then it gets.
Mixed in.
Um, we did have an issue, I think Rick, uh, alluded, we got out there, um, when we have people that, uh, blow their. Grass onto gravel roads, uh, it does create a problem for us, um, when the guys are blading, it will start to make huge bumps and this bump that I saw was. Almost up to the, the windows on the cab of the truck, so.
Oh, wow.
Yes, and that is jam packed with gravel. So when it's jam packed with gravel and we have to punt it off, we're. We're losing, we're losing all that out. So we appreciate people not blowing their grass onto the, through the roadway.
Motorcycle is appreciated.
Well, I'm saying on gravel, yes, and, and paved routes, obviously, but yes, um, but gravel, it makes a, a huge problem for blade operators to go out and blade.
You're right, so.
Yeah. C seventy bridge, uh, Willstock Bridge, uh, the deck is poured, the two guardrails or two bridge rails are poured, um, that we'll be working on their west abutment. Getting backfill in and also pouring the, uh, where the guardrails. The guardrails actually connect to the bridge, so they got some end sections there that still need to be poured, so we're still hopefully on track for July fourth. Local, four July, fourth opening, um, so.
Before July, well.
Hopefully, hopefully, I, I mean. They don't have, I mean, we have a decent amount left, but I mean, it's really, uh.
Weather dependent.
Weather dependent, obviously pouring concrete, um, and getting their dirtwork done, this weather's dependent, so. So I have for the update and then I'll let you guys go back to regular business.
Okay, let's go down to.
Minutes.
Minutes, Betty, can you read the minutes from last meeting, please?
Um, June third, twenty twenty-four. Chairman Heligold called the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors to order at nine AM, members present were Cluse, Rasmussen and Heligold. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Cluse to approve the tentative agenda, motion carries, minutes of the previous regular meeting of May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four were read and approved, approved claims for payment. In open forum, Bob Ritter thanked the board for the ordinances that were passed for the drainage and secondary roads. Ritter also thanked the board for considering a resolution that objects to the Iowa Utility Board's authority to enact eminent domain in Wright County. Julie Clayd also spoke in open forum about the nine other counties that have passed ordinances protecting against the Summit Carbon Solutions Pipeline. Clayd asked if the Board of Supervisors could protect the citizens without it coming through planning and zoning, the answer is no, they have a separate board consisted of citizens throughout the county. Tony Nickles, Wright County Assessor, introduced Jennifer Peterson as the new office clerk and receptionist. Peggy Schlutner, Schlut and Hopper, uh, Wright County Treasurer, presented the request for abatement of the US Fish and Wildlife Drainage Assessments. These are for drainage districts number six, ninety, lateral B and seventeen. Motion by Heligold and seconded by Rasmussen to abate the US Fish and Wildlife Drainage Assessments, motion carries with Cluse opposing. Motion by Cluse, seconded by. Rasmussen to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash nineteen, a resolution objecting to the Iowa Utility Board's authority to enact eminent domain. Authority within Wright County for privately owned and operated carbon dioxide pop pipelines by roll call vote, ayes, clues, Rasmussen and. Nays, nuns, resolution twenty twenty-four dash nineteen duly passes and reads as follows, and there you can see the entirety of that resolution. Jeremy Abbas, Assistant to the Wright County Engineer, gave an update on the secondary roads, blade operator. Uh, secondary roads, blade operators were able to blade four hundred and sixty-eight miles last week, trucks continue to haul spot rock. And scheduled rock with, uh, forty-eight of the ninety segments completed, crews were able to unplug the, a tile under the Nelson Avenue. And, um, and under a thirty-six inch culvert, the, um, the open rails on the C seventy bridge began to be. Board last week and hope to finish the open rails this week, motion by Rasmussen, second by Cluse to adjourn the meeting, motion carries.
I would, uh, recommend one change in the Julie Blade comment, uh, the last sentence. Uh, I would change consisted to consisting of.
They have a separate board.
Consisting of citizens.
Consisting of citizens, okay.
Okay. Minutes will stand, approved as corrected then. Okay, down to full canvas on primary election. Betty, you have the tally scores?
Sure do. Um, so the election was last Tuesday, June fourth, um, on Wednesday, then we got an email from. The Secretary State's Office that Goldfield, that we had to do a post-election audit, every county in the state of Iowa does a post-election audit. This consists of the Secretary State picking one of our precincts and saying, this is the precinct you're going to count. Um, it was Goldfield this time, and so on Thursday at one o'clock, we did a post-election audit. And hand counted the first race, which was the US, US House Representatives, uh, District Four race. Hand counted it, and then we have our certification that we have to do, um, saying there was a hundred and eight ballots counted. Eight of them was for the Democratic Party, zero for the Libertarian and one hundred for the Republican and, um. Everything was perfect, the, the counts came out exact, so I went ahead and, um, certified this. Um, that we did the publications, that we did a training course, course for our precinct election officials, um. That I tested the equipment ahead of time and that the polling places were inspected to meet accessibility, um. I notified, we didn't have any suspect suspicious incidents of cybersecurity or any issue, issues at any of our polling places, so I. Certified this and sent it in last week. So that part is done. Um, then we went, I went through and, um. Took all the write-in tapes and the tally books and that is this, um, what I handed out is the tally of the write-ins. And went through for each of the polling sites and each of the races and tallied. The names and how many votes that they got throughout.
And the polling places, the, is the disc or the precincts, correct?
Correct, you have your absities, Clarion, Belmont, Dows, Eagle Grove and Goldfield is the polling sites.
Okay.
And, um. And then compared those numbers, those tallies with the election summary tapes. To make sure that the number of write-ins, what was on the write-in tape matches, this matches. The write-ins.
These are only write-ins?
Only write-ins.
Why would you have write-ins of somebody who's on the ballot?
That's, every citizen has a choice to write in a candidate.
Even if they're already on the ballot?
Correct.
They might be voting Democrat.
Yeah.
Right.
They might have been on a different primary ballot.
So, so the Democrats, and then that's the first page you'll see, is all of the Democratic ballots and, and that's all the names in blue, all the races are in blue. Those are Democratic ballots, there was on the local races, there was no names for them to.
That makes sense.
Mark on, so then they did a write-in.
Okay. Got it.
The next page then goes to, uh, Republicans and that's kind of in the floral color.
Yeah.
And those, that shows the write-ins for that, um, those races. And then, uh, it goes after that, it goes to Libertarians and those races are all in green. So. Um, so as we get through here, um. On the Democratic races. Um, you have to have thirty-five percent of the vote of the write-ins, so we're going to go back to page one. Board of Supervisor Race, District One. And there was eighteen write-ins.
Oh.
Total. And since there was no previous. Um, election such as this one, because it was new districts, redistricting, three to five, it was. You, they needed to have thirty-five percent of the vote. Of eighteen, which is six point three.
Yeah.
You round up the seven, nobody had seven votes. So there is no winner in that race. You have to have seven votes, so the next one. Mr. Board of Supervisor, District Two. So they're just scattering.
Of the write-ins or?
The write-ins, we're just talking the write-ins right now, we're just, I'm just only going through this write-ins because. When we get to the other races, uh, it, it'll make more sense.
Okay, I'll shut up.
So on the Democratic ticket, under the Board of Supervisor, District One. Nobody got thirty-five percent of the vote of the write-ins. So it is listed as scattering. The next race, Board of Supervisor, District Two. Eighteen write-ins. Um, nobody got set, seven vote, votes, it went to scattering. District Three, there was ten write-ins. Ten write-ins would be three point five, which would be four, so on here. Um, Dean Cluse is the winner of the Democratic nominee.
Hey, your name can be on there twice in the ballot.
Republican or Democrat? Crew comes out.
So. So what we're going to. So what we do then in that case is we notify the winner, we notify you. And you have seven days after today to fill out an affidavit of a candidacy, if you want to run as a Democrat. If you do nothing, your name stays on as a Republican.
Okay.
All right. Very simple, do nothing. District Four.
Oh, yeah.
District Four, there was eight votes. It's like two point four or whatever, but there was a tie with Lynn Luke's and, and Rick McDaniel's with two votes, not enough, so it's scattering, there, nobody met the thirty-five percent. District Five, there was ten write-ins, that's three point five votes, rounded up to four, so on District Five, Todd Foss. Is the winner on the Democratic ticket, so we'll notify him and if he chooses to. File an affidavit of a candidacy within seven days, so by next week, Monday, his name will be on the ballot as a Democrat in District Five.
And he's. Similar with the, with the ruling that was changed, this, uh, the Iowa code that was changed, this is. This is the part that allows him to change parties.
Yeah.
From primary to the general election.
Because he won, he.
Because he won one of the parties, I got you.
Similar to like last time with Jason and Mike Boy.
Got you.
Talking about the sore loser law.
Right, yes.
So, okay, that does not, no, this is sore loser law is actually different because. Correct, if he had, let's say he did not win the write-in nominee.
Right.
Then the sore loser law, Iowa Code forty-four point one-two says that. He cannot come back as an independent or file not nominated by petition, the only way he'd be able to do that is. Call a convention of the Democratic Party and have them convene and nominate him to go on, so. Uh, county auditor, since the auditor's position was on four years ago, you had to have a lot of write-ins, so that is just scattering, that, so the thirty-five percent. Is, and I didn't look because I knew it was never going to make it, and also the same thing with sheriff on the Democratic, however, Amanda and Jason did. Or blank, actually, when the sheriff, but Amanda did win the write-ins on the auditor side. Then we go to the Republicans and, um. We don't really have to worry about that because there was a candidate for all of the. For them and none of these met in order to be listed with their name on the ballot. Or with their name on the abstract, you had to get ten votes and five percent of the, of the, uh, write-ins. And nobody met that on the right, on the Republicans. So then we go to. The Libertarians. On our local races, because the state does the canvas for the, for the federal and state, so we don't have to worry about that. Um, Board of Supervisor, District One, uh, Libertarian, Greg Shapool got two votes, so he wins. The Libertarian race. And he has his seven days to come in and fill out if he wants to run as a Libertarian.
True.
Uh, District Two, Carl Heligold got one vote, Ashley Bosch got one vote, it's a tie. So that means we have to draw out of the, the ballot box, we have to draw a name to break the tie. District Three, Dean Cluse wins the Libertarian, so you can even come as a Libertarian if you'd like.
Okay.
District Four, Lynn Luke's has two votes, he wins. In District Five, Todd Foss has one vote and Betty Ellis has one vote, so we have to draw for that. Um, under the auditor and the sheriff, Amanda and Jason both got three votes and so they are the winner on the Libertarian Party.
So this is similar we did with the mayor or the city council from, we, okay.
Right.
It's also what happened with Jason Russell's, correct, against Rick a few years back.
There was.
He had enough on the Democrats.
Right, yeah, and same with Mike Boy, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
We had a tie in Clarion of one of the councilmen of the mayor, so we had to draw.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah, years ago, yeah.
So, so the only two that we're drawing is concerning the Libertarian ticket.
Yep, yep.
Because they were ties. Well, I was thinking there was a tie. Scattering, you said.
Well, District Two and then District Five would be both, both are draws, right? Because you, you and Todd, or Todd and Betty and Ashley and myself, okay?
Yeah. So we'll do Ashley and Carl's first. What I did is I have one card stock paper and I put a label on them. So that they're equal size, equal, everything's equal, um. Okay, so we're going to shuffle them up.
And then Dean would probably be the draw because he would be.
You can have the sheriff do it if you want.
Want me to do it?
Oh, there you go.
I'll do it.
There's some eighties in there.
There is.
There you go. Congratulations.
Yeah. Okay. So now you got that.
Dead listening, dead listening. To bring down the.
Yeah, so now we have the same thing, two cards, labels on it. Different. The last date on it was nineteen seventy-two. Names of persons re- returned from poll books to reserve as grand jurors for years nineteen seventy-three and nineteen seventy-four by Bessie Johnson, clerk, district court and FLC West County Auditor. This twentieth day of November nineteen seventy-two.
That was my. Yeah.
I know.
Side aside, like starting printing aside, whenever we have to use it.
And if you took the display case out of the, out of the lobby, I would say, oh, what did he do with those? I was so afraid. I mean, they're just so unique.
They are.
That was my, uh, my father's oldest sister, Bessie.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Wow. You gonna fly to be a little chair?
Okay. So we will notify the winners of all the write-ins now. And let them know their options. And if they wish to continue on. Uh, they will fill out an affidavit of candidacy, if not, then, um. Then we're done and.
So I want to make sure that I understand this, nobody can. For the Board of Supervisors, nobody can run. As a. Libertarian on the, well, I could and Lynn could, we have that choice.
And Ashley could, yeah.
Great.
And I'm ready too.
Okay.
So it'll be.
Nobody, nobody can run no party.
Right, no one can do it independently.
Okay.
Todd Foss.
And then on the, as a Democrat.
Todd Foss.
He can run.
Todd Foss.
Long as he does.
So is there? Anybody's seat except? Mine and Lynn's are the only ones that are decided.
Yeah.
Is that true?
I would say yes. Yes.
Good. Because nobody got thirty.
No, no.
Oh, yeah, actually, yeah, yeah, and Ashley.
Yeah.
Ashley.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
That was District Two.
Yeah.
Okay, because she had more than. I thought she had to have thirty-five percent, six point three.
Who's that, which one?
Uh. Under the Democratic side.
Yeah, so that one is out there, those are all scattering, but she won the election on the Republicans.
And the Libertarian.
And the Libertarians.
Okay.
So she's, she's done.
She can, she can switch if she wanted to switch to Libertarian. Okay, probably suggest that.
So.
And, and the seven days starts from when we certify the, the vote?
Yeah, just today.
Okay.
So today starts the count, seven days.
And who does the notifications?
My office does.
Okay, alright.
Well, um, I'll probably just end up calling everyone.
Okay.
And letting them know, do you want me to call you or do you know?
No, I know.
Ashley, do I need to call you to let you know you won the nomination? Okay, Lynn, do I need to call you? Okay, I think, so I'm pretty down already. Okay, so. That cleans up that mess. Next is the.
You got a call, Rick?
She has nothing to call me on. He can run as a Democrat.
Democrat.
Right, no.
No, Libertarian, Libertarian.
Libertarian.
Oh, yeah, he won the, he won the Libertarian.
So countywide. There was one thousand one hundred ninety-six Republicans that voted, one thousand one hundred ninety-six Republicans. There was eighty Democratic Party. Votes and four Libertarian votes. For a total ballot count of one thousand two hundred and eighty. So then what we did after we got the, all of the write-ins and stuff calculated, we double checked. To make sure that. Each tape from each of the polling sites matched up with what we uploaded with what you have in front of you, make sure that the counts. All matched. Okay, so that. Um, and actually not that sheet, it was the abstracts which you'll be signing here.
You know.
I got too many, I got too many papers here. I matched it to this one here because it gives it by precinct. Each count by precinct, so this is the one I matched the, this tape to. Okay, because this is all the steps that you guys are supposed to do, but it will take. Okay, cause this is all the steps that you guys are supposed to do, but it will take. A long, long time and, and, and sitting in front of everybody. There, there'll be mistakes, so I just do it for you. Okay, so this here is. A compile of everything we uploaded the night of the election. And we double-check it to the tapes. And so that's the, uh, canvas summary. Okay, here's the canvas summary. Then after the canvas summary is done, we do an abstract which lists the winner. Of each race. So it'll be like, um. And, and this isn't the winner, the abstract of like the US Senate, that will go to our state, so Ryan, Ryan Mountain won. Um, for the Democrats. Cynthia Passion. Won Wright County only, then they, they take it and they do a canvas next week. For the state offices, cause they compile it all. Then on here, um. District One Democratic. Um, is all listed as scattering because there was not enough write-ins. District Two. Democrats was scattering because there was not enough. Write-ins to be listed. District Three Dean Cluse is the winner. On the Democratic listing. Supervisor, uh, District Four is scattering because nobody had. Enough. District Five is Todd Foss. As the district, as the supervisor winner on the abstract of votes. Uh, Auditor was listed under the Democrats is all. Uh. Scattering. All the write-ins and Sheriff was scattering. Then under the Republican. Uh, Randy Feenstra. In Wright County only beat Kevin Virgil, six hundred and forty votes to four hundred and sixty-one. Dennis Guth got nine hundred and seventy-seven. Shannon Latham was one hundred and twenty-one. Mark Thompson, nine hundred thirteen. And then we have Supervisor District One. Uh, Rick Rasmussen with five hundred and eighty-one and Greg Shapul, five hundred and sixty-nine. District Two. Uh, Ashley Bosch, five hundred and eighty-eight. Carl Hogaboll, Hogaboll, five hundred and sixty. District Three is Dean Cluse with one thousand twenty-five. District Four Lynn Luke's, seven hundred and ninety-four, Rick McDaniel's, three hundred and nine. District Five Supervisor Republican, um, Betty Ellis, five hundred and fifty-six, Todd Foss, four hundred and seventy-five. And, uh. Mark, or Richard Mark Eckelberger is one hundred and twenty-nine. Auditor, one thousand fifty-seven for Amanda Meyer. And one thousand one hundred for Jason Schlutthoff for Sheriff. And then we did the Libertarians. Um. The United States District Four Libertarian is under scattering. Uh, just Senator District Twenty-eight is scattering. District Fifty-five is all under scattering. District Fifty-six is, uh, under scattering. And the state will contact us if there's enough. Under scattering, under write-ins, they'll contact us and they'll say, can we have your.
Writing.
Write-ins and then they will tabulate, they feel that. There might be enough to, to warrant the thirty-five percent, so. Um.
Well, we've already done that for them, that's what we just.
That's what this, yeah, that's what this sheet here is for, is to let them know, and that way if they need to. They can calculate when the results all come in and they put it together, whether. There might or may not be unable to have a, a write-in race, so. Um. So Greg Shapul wins the Libertarian District One with his two write-ins. Ashley Bosch won the draw. And I, I do need to write that on here.
That was precinct two. Right?
District Two.
Or District Two, excuse me.
Yeah. And the District Three Dean Cluse. Won with two write-ins. District Four Lynn Luke's won with two write-ins. District Five, uh, was a tie and Betty won. Won by draw. Libertarian, um, Auditor. Uh, Amanda Meyer won by draw and, or draw. Amanda won with three write-ins. And Libertarian Sheriff Jason Schlutthoff are one with three write-ins and I. I don't need to contact you two either. So. That is it. Any questions?
So we'll be contacting Greg Shapul is allowed to run under the. Libertarian. Ticket in the general election.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Against Rick running as a Republican.
Yes. And, and I had the status of how that went, like, I, back in two thousand and four, uh, Denise Baker and I. Ran as Auditor under the Republican. I, I won the Republican nominee by, I think it was somewhere around eighty to ninety votes. She changed over to, uh, Independent, I believe at that time. To run, cause the law allowed that and then I beat her by one thousand nine hundred and. I don't know, eighty-some votes, so changing is not, maybe not always.
And then, so, so that race is undecided until after the general election.
That is correct.
Provided that he runs on the Libertarian ticket.
Seven days, right.
So on seven days, you'll know.
Was being on the Democratic ticket, you did not. Get write-ins as a.
I got it right, but I lost the draw on the Libertarian.
That's right, so, okay, so you're out. Uh, Todd and Betty vote. Todd can run as a.
Democrat.
As a Democrat because he won.
The write-ins.
The write.
The write-ins as a Democrat, okay.
But he lost the draw.
But he lost the draw. Oh, yeah.
That was, that's what was confusing me is if he lost that, but he. But he won the Democratic write-in.
Yep.
I got you.
Yep.
And he had more than. Thirty-five percent of the Democratic writing.
And you'll see on here that. Blank, you know, there's citizens marked the oval.
Yeah.
But did not write a name in, that's when you'll see blank on here on the write-ins is. They just darkened in the oval and so he got, uh, there was a tie, there was four. Write-ins for Todd Foss and for blank. Uh, but we throw the blank out because they did not write a name in, so he gets it. Cause that was my question to Secretary State's Office, do I put blank and Todd Foss in the can as a tie? And they said, well, who are you gonna notify if blank wins?
And one of the above on it, on the ballot.
Right, yeah.
That's all of us any given to him, like, so. Todd just had the opportunity to possibly be Democrat and Libertarian, but Betty is now Republican or Libertarian, whatever she decides.
Okay, that makes sense.
It's, this has been.
Strange one, isn't it?
Oh, it's been.
It is because of the two laws, the sore loser law throws some of the things out.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and yet the write-in law allows some of the things.
That was. First were the Libertarians that came in.
In two thousand eighteen, they was Libertarians and then that time there was nine people that voted. Uh, in the Libertarians. So, yeah.
What's your average? So you had about a thousand people, what's the average general election amount of people that? Are. Was it tied for primary?
Yes.
And then general elections around two thousand, depends on the year, I guess, maybe?
And then how many people vote?
Yeah.
Oh, we've been up to five thousand the, the year, cause I think I had like. Thirty-five hundred votes at one time and then, um. And then Denise then had like whatever. Yeah, something, so we were up to like o- over five thousand at that, and there are seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-four registered voters. In the county.
I felt like there's a lot of undervotes, am I right?
Yes, and, and, and the undervote is you, uh, did not vote that race, that's what we considered, so you just skipped that race. Cause you didn't know, you didn't care, you whatever, you wasn't sure.
And I felt like that was high. We're just looking at the numbers.
With the undervotes, yeah.
Seen that many undervotes.
Yeah.
People just like.
Yeah, just skip that, and I, I only wanted to, you know, I only wanted to vote for Dean Cluse, that's all it is, and so they just marked that oval and boom, they were done. So.
Yeah.
And it doesn't, yeah, and if you, undervotes don't erase your ballot by any means, it's, it's just by your choice. So. Alright, so with that, all being said and done. The abstract of votes is what I read off.
Okay, and there's that one that's on there.
And all of those pages have to be signed, and do you have a blue pen?
Nope.
Okay.
I might have there.
We just want to see the triangles from Carl.
Yeah, that's just the front page, yeah.
What was it named?
So I had, it looked to me like I had the most undervotes, people looked at the ballot and said, why vote for him because he's the only one wrong? Okay.
Could be. Yeah, who, who knows what people think or why they think the way they think.
Hundred and fifty-nine on the Republican.
Now, there's. Two.
Pardon me?
Thank you.
Skip over it, said no sense in making my dad.
No.
Too much work.
Traumatizing to my age to do that, we had, I would test the.
Yeah, you don't leave anything blank.
Yeah, so it was like. I don't like particular images, I were taught reading in phrases.
All the girls upstairs are gonna make this last long. But it was. Well, otherwise they could have it there in five minutes.
A lot of things to find.
Sharing important.
I mean. Eighteen of all those. Yeah, but I think they do a hundred.
Yeah, that's right.
He's doing the first side.
Oh, yeah.
Probably six bucks to figure it out.
This is stressful, you could figure out the rules, the reasons, the laws, cause I was thinking.
The Libertarian. Yeah.
Well, that Eric.
And, um. They, they had one Libertarian and that one Libertarian wrote his name in, so he can draw this and that is a Libertarian if he wants to be on the ballot.
Sheriff all the way there?
Sometimes.
I've never heard of a little staring.
Is there any kind of thirty-five percent rule or where it would go back to the?
Winner takes all.
Winner takes all, what the county is, it is, including writings.
Yes.
What's your dad dating, like, sometimes? You guys looking?
You're signing.
Oh, the Kelly boys?
Yeah.
Yeah, those are the, the tapes that I, I drew.
No. Pronounce his name.
Around here.
I have to slow down and think when I say that one.
And I shouldn't have, I was, I was. Jeremy Dason. I do, I'm standing here doing a little sound lead, though, did I call Jeremy Dason? So I should have been going to you.
Cause, um, I have to send eight copies of that stuff to the state, so. And then I need to keep it public myself, so I just.
If I say it, maybe Jack will punch. That'll say it, I think I can say the name.
If these were in some form of order, then I'd be. No. Sorry.
Alright. Little city administration, do not. You know so much.
These ones that have writing on them, do you have to dis-?
Jeremy Blassey. I wanna put his Ellen out, please. Hell no, I mean, way back it was. Whole river. Well, it sticks in my mind, so I have to snap. So about the, uh, cause there's whole croppers.
He's getting good.
In Wright County.
Yeah.
But it's the. The A R. They do sheep person. I see very experience.
Did you, did you paint yourself with downed cells or did you have some?
I tried to do that the day after.
Why I was out, I didn't know, cause I was.
Were we supposed to sign something on that?
No, no, that was all me.
Okay.
That's all my certification saying I did it.
Right, right.
I'll sign, yes, okay. You gotta through that. Let's go back down to item number, uh, seven. Receive a monthly revenue report from the Sheriff's Department. Okay.
Okay. County car service and mileage, two thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty cents. County new and renewed weapons permit, two hundred and forty, and copy fees of five with a total of three thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty cents. Motion to receive. Sorry, all in favor? All right, motion carries. There you go.
Did we have a motion on the canvas of vote?
Well, the, the motion to cut the canvas of votes. So moved. Sorry. Any further discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries, okay. Okay, Adam, let me go back down to your item A and B.
Yep, uh, so every year we do the, uh, fuel bid, um, for the next fiscal year. Uh, so we put that out to, uh, local vendors that we've had in the past. Uh, we had four, uh, out of the five that we have sent out. So Hancock County Oil, United Co-op, Agvantage FS and W and H. Um, this year we currently have Agvantage FS. Um, this next year they were the apparent little bit at point zero seven nine cents over rack price. Current one is point zero seven eight, along with one up by point zero zero one. We get our rack price off from the DOT and then they add that to their, for their, um, delivery.
Not much of a margin.
No, no, so, uh, we just need a motion and.
So move.
Just second. Any further discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
We will get letters out to all that have, uh, that we got bids from and then also send a contract to Agvantage FS. To get that signed and I'll bring it back to you guys. Um, next item, you can see it says Appia on it for this contract, uh, it's our parent one-on-one project. Uh, this is the fifty-three, which is the galt block top. Um, so we just need, um, I wanted to get you a detailed payment and then we also need your signature, um, at the end to sign off on the final payment. Um, the project was awarded amount at five seventy-one, five hundred and seventy-one thousand. Uh, the authorized amount with change orders was five hundred and ninety-nine, so not much change order on that and not much overrun.
Yeah. You want a motion on this one also then?
Yep.
Okay.
So moved.
Sorry, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I'll take your signature on this one, I guess we'll keep those. And that's all I have. Betty, when you were, uh, out of the office, I did the update, it's essentially just follow the same.
Thank you. Okay.
Hey, any updates on meetings, older new business, gentlemen?
Me and Sandy, or Sandy and I. Met with, uh, Humble County Supervisors on the twenty-eight agreement. And our proposal taking care of their sanitation. And I just got a message from Sandy. At Humble County that they did pass it. So we'll be working with them and I'll get that back to us, get their signatures on it and.
That's for the county sanitary, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
AKA sanitary.
So it'll be good to open both counties.
I've been helping for the last.
Four years.
Yeah.
On and on.
Or longer.
So, uh, they've approved it, it'll come back to us for our approval?
Yes.
And then, and that's commencing July one or?
Yep. So put that on the agenda for next Monday, I'll get the paper from them.
Excellent. Uh, I have economic development more of seven.
I have, uh, no meetings this week, uh, I will be over at Russell at the church camp, uh, this week, I'll be going over this, this afternoon. Um. Eric, did you have an update on the pre-construction meeting?
Yeah, um, end of July is their start date.
End of July, okay.
They figure it'll take sixty days.
Okay.
Which puts it around the first of October, assuming dry and. All right.
Good. And Adam, do they coordinate through you for the road or out as?
There'll have to be a little bit of coordination, but I mean, it's, they're raising it, they're going to have to, we'll probably try to take off some of the rock before they.
Yeah.
Um, get there, just so we don't lose all that, we'll probably take it one way or the other.
Okay.
So. Sorry. But, yeah.
Safety never takes a break.
No.
No, watch out.
The Lake Association has been notified at their annual meeting that that road is going to be closed.
Okay. And do most of the residents on Elm Lake, it would be affected, are they members of that association where they would be notified?
Hmm, probably not.
Okay. I know I've talked and shared the plans with, uh. Uh, Jake Johnson and also with, uh, Mr. Warren Key.
I've shared with both farmers on either side of the.
Okay, great. Right.
Awesome. Awesome.
Um, next week you guys will be, we're getting, starting to wrap stuff up for the fiscal year end, June thirty. And next week you'll be doing the certification of salaries. And, um, so we just wanted to confirm the three percent across the board. And then during budget discussions, there was a couple departments that requested four percent for their employees. Um, there was, uh, the Recorder's Office, Jen Holgrave. She was a four percent, um, I believe. Department Nate's salary. I can't.
Right, it's all three of them.
Pardon?
All three of them.
All three of them was five percent.
Um, I think it was.
Four. Why would they go four also, okay?
I don't think it was four.
Four percent, yeah. And then, um. Trying to think of what other, uh, Amanda was going to be a four percent also.
Yep.
Yeah, we had it there at four. Was there any other, oh, yeah, here it is, this page where four percent for all of them and they had their. Was there any other ones that you guys talked about?
No, not by all.
And do we have, uh, do we need to do anything with the? Sheriff's, uh. Oh, I'm going to pick it up, the union, all of that stuff's.
That's pretty been negotiated.
Okay. Okay.
So you'll. Review the twenty-eight, do you need me to add an environmental on that salary?
Not until we hire. Right?
Yeah, I wouldn't think we'd do any till we hire.
Right.
Did you want it for person in that position?
Yes.
Right.
Okay. I will, that, that know that.
Okay, and ask for the board? No, do a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.